I'll call the board tonight, City Council meeting on regular schedule, council meeting on Monday, November twenty first, twenty twenty two, at seven, like, seven oh four P M. So appreciate everyone being there. Records reflect all council members present. Along with our city administrator, Mr. Vance, and our head of multiple departments and running the whole line tonight, Mr. Deerehoff, along their staff members, and their city attorney, Mr. Hughes to my right, and our city superintendent, you know who he is, all the students you can. Appreciate it. And those of you who came tonight, we certainly appreciate this, one of the largest crowds on the path, we know you're here for the business items that are listed here, so we will skip the proclamations. Hope y'all put their...
We're gone.
I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do that. So we appreciate it. One thing I do want to bring to your attention was sadness today that we learned of the passing of our longtime city resident businessman, former mayor, Mr. Ellis Green, aged one hundred and two. So we ask you to keep his family and those that they were close to him in your prayers as we go through the next few days, following back final arrangements, uh, your colleagues double time. From that standpoint, uh, tonight, our invocation and our pledge allegiance, led by Councilman, Mr. Allgood.
If you'd like to pray with me, please do so now. To have the following come tonight to conduct the city's business, we ask that you continue to invite, inspire, and guide us in and out of the council chambers. As we approach Thanksgiving, we are thankful and blessed to have great department heads and their teams that serve this city well. We are also thankful and inspired by the young people who are here today, the future leaders of Malden or abroad. We also remember the Green family. We pray for them in this time of grief. We also pray for our citizens, including those who are homeless, sick, or feel like they are not loved. And we do this all in your name. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the proclamation and resignation tonight, we'll come off on our, I believe, our police chief, Chief Miller.
Uh, one of council's building, uh, my, one of my objectives was to establish a stronger bond on the police department and community. Uh, we have had assistance, had several years of operating and back with it, a good foundation for stronger relationships. Sergeant Turner has spearheaded the class and been a great instructor and asset to the department and the program. Uh, at this time, you'll come up, you know, he'll say a couple of things, and then we'll present your certificate.
Thank you everybody for letting us speak here tonight. Two thousand twenty-two, mark our seventh annual Police Citizens Academy. I'd like to thank chief and city council, uh, for providing this program after a short hiatus. I'd like to thank our participants for making it all possible. The program was designed to help bridge the gap between our citizens, police officers, and servants. By building trust and partnering with one another, we can help make our communities a safer place for everyone. This year, the Citizens Academy spanned over an eight-week period, beginning every Monday evening for three hours. Our citizens academy took the time out of their lives to inside look at what we do here from our police department behind the scenes. They have a variety of police officers from our department teach several topics from our K nine division, DUI traffic enforcement, detective unit, crime prevention, victim's advocate, use of force, and citizens' response to active shooter. Uh, I encourage all of our citizens academy participants to complete their key program so we can know what to improve each year as we continue to move forward, and hopefully it works out and maybe to grow the program and have more participants. Uh, but from the bottom of heart, I hope y'all will be able to thank it very much. At this time, we'd like to present the certificate. It's the key survivors. James Stern. Captain. I also love to thank him because he comes on Wednesdays for court and helps with social security, rain, sleet, snow, whatever it may be, so we greatly appreciate him. Thank you, sir. One of our two class clowns, Ray Manley.
The...
Okay, I'll take the top one for the action. Yes, sir. Mr. Randy.
That's the other.
We have a learner. Don't mind him. You have a learner. Ben Che. Absolutely appreciate it. Everybody else, if you have any contact information, you need something, just let me know. Stay in touch, okay? Don't forget to write long suit because you've got six months. Okay? Keep our options on the table, all right? Thank you.
This was Randy Escher's third time to try to graduate.
We find one learner. We had to just go ahead and pass him. We felt bad.
We didn't want to leave him behind.
No one left behind.
Just thank you guys for your third month of important contribution. Also, as always, we present proclamations, especially with champions. So I'm going to ask our chair of reparations, you're all good, you're joking down front, we have a special proclamation for that. Whereas the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two Malden High School girls volleyball team, led by head coach Valerie Tombs and assistant head coach Selena Walker, finished the season thirty-two and seven. And whereas Malden's volleyball team has won the, here we go guys, five A state championship in the first half. Time in program history. And whereas the Mavericks won the title over Lexington in a three-set sweep, won with a twenty-five, twenty-two, let them think about it with a twenty-five, twenty-two, and blew them away with a twenty-five, eighteen. And whereas the Mavericks are also the first Greenville County public school to win a volleyball title since Hillcrest in twenty thirteen. Whereas the Malden High School girls volleyball team, consistent of, I apologize, I said a butchered name. Correct me, okay? We'll get it on tape correctly. Maddie Howell, Sydney Sheer, Ella Lester, Jasmine Newfer, Charlie Robinson, Allison Norris, Mia Armaga, Mia Rohan, Kaylee Gutman, Serena Gollum. Yeah, yeah. Anna Schneider, Olivia Davis, Jayden Crowe, Ella Ferguson, and Lena Scott, through hard work and dedication, persevered and won the championship. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Terry Mayor, Mayor of the city of Malden, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, as Malden High School Girls Volleyball Team Day, and recognizing them for winning the state five A championship. If you were the head coach and assistant coach, you want to come up in front, please? Bring the, bring the championship trophy.
My assistant comes along.
Oh.
So I wish I could, yeah, she's a part of everybody.
Congratulations, head coach, to the twenty twenty-two Malden High School varsity girls volleyball team reaching five A state championships, twenty-first day of November, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Yes, I call you, and if you come to join us up here? Yes, sir.
If you're not here, we'll just...
Maddie Powell. Sydney Sheer. Ella Lester.
You're at practice. Practice. They're a better team than they used to be.
Allison Norris. Mia Rohan. Serena. Anna Schneider.
Uh, yes.
Olivia Davis. Ella Ferguson. Now, another time, council did stand up, wasn't getting beautiful. Yeah.
Mr. Tate, would you like to come join us?
Yes, sir.
Mayor may need to stand up for all.
Right, there's some talk. I know, I'm like, yeah.
Get on your tippy toes, mayor.
I think you guys... Congratulations, ladies, and of course, and as always...
I'm just, um, recording.
No, I'm sorry.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
And, uh, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our reading approval minutes from the city council meeting of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, on pleasure, council. Move that the urbanists, and the motion is our second.
Second.
Second was King. Any discussion, corrections, adjustments? Here in the knowledge in favor of the motion of approval, city council meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty-two, as committed, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, life sign. Here's the motion, here's the notice. Now, we're to our first total comment section. This area is reserved for items on the agenda. We will have two people signed up to speak on items on the agenda tonight, for saving breath. Come on up and hopefully write those space, name, and address. Worry too much about the limited three minutes.
Good evening. My name is David Veratias. I'm with Frank Engineering, representing the developer of this year's also tonight. My address is one thirty-two Pillow Road, and we're here for the Tanner Road project agenda. Just want to let you know we're here in case any questions should arise. Thank you.
Sir. Mr. Burrow.
Say your name.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, sir. Which item on our agenda is reports on our standing committees, finance, and policy of...
There's a hand raised.
Mr. Mayor, there's a, there is a hand raised for a public comment.
Sorry about that. Thank you all there. Yes, sir. Allow me to set up to speak. There you go.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. My name is Seth Young, and I'm an attorney with the Institute for Justice. I represent Jeremy Sark, Sark's Automotive, and Jack Abney in their lawsuit challenging Malden zoning ordinance that forces their U-Haul to close at the end of the year. On the agenda this evening is the city's proposed amendment to this ordinance. First off, I commend the city for proposing an amendment that properly grandfathers in my clients so that they don't have to close their U-Haul business at the end of this year. This is constitutionally required. However, the proposed amendment still falls short. If enacted, the new ordinance would require my clients to put up a new eight-foot fence around their back lot and keep all their rental equipment there except for brief periods when serving customers. The practical effect of this would destroy my clients' advertising, trucks parked out front, and force them to build a new sign. In addition to the fencing and advertising costs, it would greatly complicate their business operation as they would have to constantly move trucks around. Let me be clear, these sorts of restrictions are not imposed on any comparable business, not on the multiple car lots on Main Street, not on the enterprise rent-a-car, not on the branded company box trucks parked in front of many businesses on Main Street, only on U-Haul. There is no rational basis to target U-Haul. This proposed ordinance needlessly interferes with productive small business, the type of business Malden is built on and on which its good citizens rely for services and for employment. Keeping additional regulations on Sark's automotive magnifies, not reduces, this ordinance unconstitutional targeting. It is arbitrary, irrational, and at this point, almost vindictive. We call on the city officials to support, support small business, not undermine it. Thank you for your time. I am ready for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Clear a question, maybe? You're none. Thank you again, sir. Back to force and standing committees, finance, policy, and trust.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing major coming up on the policy tonight. I just did want to make a reminder, we have our interim administrator here this evening, and we have our new administrator coming on at the end of this month, so.
Monday.
It's coming up, so Mr. Duncan will be joining us. We're excited to bring him on, bring him into this team before Malden, as we're set up, and will provide for a leadership at the city of Malden, so it's an exciting time to be a part of it. Obviously, that doesn't lie just to finance and policy, but I did want to mention that.
Thanks. Love the safety. Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I, I just have a couple of things, but I think we skipped over the city administrator report. Do you want to go back, or do you want me to continue?
Uh, go ahead and once your report's done, I'll jump back.
All right, excellent. Um, just wanted to thank Sergeant Turner. I guess he's already slid out. Be sure to tell him to say thank you for his hard work and dedication with the academy. I think we had eight candidates that went through, so it's always good to see not only our youth police academy, but the citizens academy as well, and we encourage y'all to spread that word and have other folks participate in the future. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. That's all I got for you there. If we can go backwards now.
Thank you, Mr. King. Yeah, now I mean, yeah, my number's straight. Former our city administrator, Mr. Vance.
Mayor and council, I have a few items. Uh, just as you guys know, the city's finishing up its financial audit for the end of June thirty, twenty twenty-two. We have received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level, an auditor, auditorium award. That means all of our documents that the city staff submitted were not modified or changed. Um, there were no concerns or deficiencies. The city remains in strong financial condition. Uh, those documents will be finalized at the end of this month and be available to council and to the public in December, once we can get them on the website, so you guys have ended the year on a positive and are moving forward. The next thing I wanted to remind you guys of, for those council members that receive city health insurance now is open enrollment period, um, and the other item, December sixth is the Christmas dinner for boards and commissions, if you guys, hopefully that's already on your calendar. And Seth does start on, Mr. Duncan starts on Monday, so as I mentioned in the email to you guys, I will be here Tuesday and Wednesday with him, and then we'll determine kind of how he wants to make the transition and when he, um, you know, I'm available as much or as little as you guys need be moving forward. So this will probably be my last council meeting, especially sitting up here. So I do want to thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for, um, you guys being great to me for the past few months. I enjoyed it. You have a great staff, a great city, and I hope I get to come back and visit. I hope you guys will invite me back, and, um, you guys should be very proud of the city you have and the leaders you have and the, and the staff that you have, so thank you.
I have no words. Sure, Mr. Mayor, you will. Words if you would mind, or the job that we have seen from our interim to administrative is phenomenal. But, uh, the brief week that we were without an administrator and the Vegas stepped up and filled in, taught us all very valuable lessons, just how important it is. Perhaps one moderate for the things that we have, this council can do, aggressive with in our city, and that you've done a phenomenal job of stepping in. We thought J R got the fire hose method when he came on board, but you got all trucks lined up aiming at the same time. Thank you.
Wanted to say something like...
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Eric. Um, no, I just wanted to say thank you, Robert. Um, you have not been here a long time, but you have been here a powerful time. I told somebody today that I felt that there was a brief period where it seemed like somebody had taken a jigsaw puzzle box and dumped it on the floor and kicked the pieces under the furniture. And you came along and you got all of those pieces back, and you presented it to council and said, here's the complete picture. Um, you did a tremendous job. Um, not only did you fill the, that office with a tremendous amount of professionalism, you were able to work with, uh, our outstanding department heads, our outstanding professional staff across all departments, uh, and each and every one of them stood behind you, uh, and applauded the job that you did, and I think that that speaks volumes about not only who you are as a professional, but who you are as a person, and I value the relationship that we have built both personally, professionally, and I am just so grateful that you have been a part of the city of Malden and appreciate the fact that you're going to stick around for a few minutes and help Seth figure out where the bathroom is. Thank you, Eric.
And it's all, as all council said, amen to that. Thank you, Mr. Matt. What did work, Mr. Crayton?
Um, nothing major to discuss. I just, I noticed a couple of leaves have fallen, and I just want to commend the, uh, other works for keeping up with the leaves. I've been around town and seen a lot of them. They were one day on the medicine, said they're doing a pretty good job under a lot of stress, a lot of leaves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crayton. I did enough order. I got about seven coming on back to the road by today. Welcome your guest to my... Thank you, Mr. Crayton. Uh, any other development, Mr. Matt?
I'll push around. Thank you.
Bill, we gather from Scootman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Something I'd like to say to Mr. Vance, thank you so much. It's been a real joy, and I back up with, um... Um, on to the building codes, they had seventeen hundred and forty-five building inspections in October, and fifteen new businesses opened in October in the city of Malden. And that's all I have.
Reparations for all of it.
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't had a report at this time.
Sure. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business, business ordinance is second reading, Mr. O.
There are three ordinances associated with the annexation and establishment of Tanner Road Plan Development. First is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by W Earl Jones and Nancy L Jones, and located at thirty Tanner Road by one hundred percent position method, and to establish a zoning classification of B B, plan development, one percent property.
Excellent. So, yes, Mr. Scootman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to approve the, uh, motion, or make a motion to a third on second reading.
You have the motion, it's our second. Second. Matt, any discussion? Mr. Scootman.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I just... All in favor of this development, a little worried about what S D D O P is offering for the roads in that area. I'm just, you know, taking off the track light and putting in a, I mean, people that are all very long and cross over, burden, uh... And making it more difficult for people to turn left if they're on Tanner or burden for that matter on the Tanner, so it doesn't worry me a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just real briefly, as, as I look at this and saw this project come through, I appreciate it. I don't know this developer from any other developer. It's everything through the city, but one thing I appreciate about how you handled this was they listened to the concerns of council upon votes asked us, well, I think we have more information, or something that our concerns of, as you have the partnership with developers and looking for deep projects like this, I can just appreciate that kind of relationship with developers. Just wanted to bring comment to that.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. You know what else? You're none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance for the, uh, Earl Jones and the NASA general are here for Tanner Road, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, life sign? And the motion cares.
Ordinance is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by W Earl Jones and located at thirty Tanner Road, a one hundred percent position method, and to establish a zoning classification of B B, plan development.
Thank you. Mr. Scootman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve track two on second reading.
Thank you. It's our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rose. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve on second reading annexation of property on track two, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, life sign? Here none, motion... Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries, you know.
Last ordinance is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Seagull Farmer and Elaine Askew and located at fifty Tannaro by one hundred percent position method and to establish a zoning classification of EB land development.
Thank you. Welcome back to you, Ms. Kuzma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve track three on second reading.
Please, sir, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor of approval of the second reading ordinance will be tracked at fifty Tannaro, Mr. Lynn Farmer and Ms. Askew, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries, you know. Next is new business. First reading, Ms. Allen.
One ordinance for first reading and this is an ordinance to amend the Malden zoning ordinance to establish definitions, standards, and provisions for drive-through facilities.
Thank you. Also for the BBS, Ms. Kuzma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is draw through standards for, um, a simple rate development and also kind of of changing some of our sweeping, I should say, some of the other, um, drive-through facilities and queuing and things like that. Uh, this was approved through the planning commission on, uh, I'm sorry, October twenty-fourth. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve this on first reading.
Is there a second? Second, second, Mr. Matt. Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor of the motion to approve a first reading, the, 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 establishing definition, standard, provisions, and draft, so say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries.
Council was requested to appoint or for an appointment to the building and zoning board.
Standing committee, please put up a second. Or should be, yes, please.
Uh, there is a vacancy, the last vacancy on the zoning board of appeals and Mr. Philip Cochran had applied for that. It will be proceed six. And I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Cochran to seat six, which expires at the end of June twenty twenty-third.
Excuse me, Mr. Second. Second, Mr. Craven. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to appoint Mr. Cochran to seat six on the building code, can you say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, zoning board of appeals.
Yep, I read you wrong. The board of bill, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Neither the motion carries, you know, says, thank you, Miller.
Council was requested to approve amendment to mutual rate agreement with the county enforcement unit.
This is public safety, Ms. King.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the amended agreement with the county drug enforcement unit.
Motion is your second. Second, Mr. Craven. Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor of the approval of the motion to the amended mutual aid with the program enforcement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries, you know. That's Miller.
Council was requested to grant the utility easement to Duke Energy for the new fire department headquarters.
Also for public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, motion to approve the, the energy utility easement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Craven. Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the utility, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries.
Council was requested to accept a ten-car camera grant in the amount of eighty-six thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-four cents.
Also for public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just like to note that this is something that, um, the late sergeant Sam Harrow worked hard, um, for the police department. Um, and I know you're all very appreciative of that. Um, with the acceptance of this grant, the police department will be able to purchase approximately sixteen cameras. So I'd like to make the motion to accept the grant, um, for the purchase of the cameras.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Matt. Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor of the motion to accept the grant for purchase of cameras, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Council was requested to have an assignment of contract with CHA for the continued on-call sanitary sewer engineering services for.
From public works, Mr. Craven.
It sounded like you make a motion to assign CHA contracts previously held by Frazier Engineering Consultant.
Solution. You think Mr. Craven is our second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Any discussion? Mr. Craven.
Just for everybody, uh, basically, CHA has purchased Frazier Engineering, so this is just a swap.
Sectional, second. So. Okay, motion is to accept the recommendation that we assign the on-call sanitary engineer, sewer engineer, direct to CHA consultant. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries, you know.
Council was requested to approve and authorize the municipal state highway project agreement for the Belt and Road Repairing Project.
Fortunately, Mr. Craven.
Uh, yes, we still have a few questions we want to answer from second line of UFT. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to hold on the floor, uh, the municipal state highway project agreement.
Okay, motion to hold on the floor until our next registration council meeting in December. Is there a second? Second. So. Second. Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor of motion to hold on the floor, the state highway project agreement until we're met with a stated council, so, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion will be held.
Council was requested to approve insurance renewal with anchor benefits for Act of ND and Ameritis, which is the demo on vision plans.
But I suppose, Mr. Reynolds, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year about this time, Mr. Bitts, it is, he has to, uh, look at the major insurance options for the cities, for, uh, city employees. Um, in conjunction with staff and our city insurance broker, this was competitive with it out. And these are the three that first, uh, so I'd like to make motion that we approve the renewal with anchor benefits for Act of ND and Ameritis.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Any discussion?
Just want to comment, Mr. Mayor. The only major change for this one is increasing the debt pool from sixty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand.
Any questions, Mr. Reynolds? Any questions? You're none. All those in favor of motion to approve the renewal of anchor benefits for Act of ND and Ameritis on a demo vision plan, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The next three or four items come to this party before us as a committee or the whole, or will be the pleasure of council on that consideration.
Mayor, remember that we consider items A, I through L with informal methods.
Change of motion to consider A, J, I in informal method. It's committee to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? All of us in favor of consideration of the following items in formally to the committee, all say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. We consider ourselves as committee of the whole to consider items. I believe that was coming from, uh, from, Mr. Matt.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Actually, the resolution that I am going to propose combines items A, I and A, J. So I would move adoption of a resolution to approve one, an amended and restated development agreement, and second amended purchase and sale agreement with Parker Group Development LLC and Long Branch Investors LLC. And two, funding for public improvement cost identified in the amendment and restated development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Is there a second?
Second.
What did you just say? That's good.
Sorry.
Any discussion? You're none. All those in favor of the motion to accept a resolution to approve an amended restated development agreement and second amended purchase and sale agreement with Parker Group Development LLC and Long Branch Investors LLC and funding for public improvement cost identified in the amendment and restated development agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the purchase of property located at thirteen Jenkins Court, Malden, South Carolina. Two nine six six two, identify this group of contact, that number M zero zero three zero one zero two zero zero four zero zero.
And the motion, Mr. Matt, is a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Discussion. You're none. All those in favor of the motion, Mr. Matt, just say, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries. Next is. L helps for building the world first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance, um, and amendment to section three, twelve dot three dot eight, cessation of the sale and rental of moving trucks, trailers, infomobile containers, and temporary portable storage units of the Malden zoning ordinance to remove the cessation period for such use previously allowed within the C two district and to add regulations for said non-conforming use in the C two district.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzma. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Please note, this is an ordinance, so this will be two readings. So this is the first reading tonight. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Legal has approved this. Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
You know, might pick it up, Mr. Hughes, stated affirmative. Oh. Say it here. Yes. Rest. Legal has. We have a discussion. You're none. All those in favor of the motion to accept the amendment ordinance on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. You're none. The motion carries on first. We are now back to public comment. Have anyone signed up? Is anyone online? See anyone? All right. Uh, next is council concerns. Ms. Kuzma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to, um, let everyone know there is still a vacant seat on the planning commission. Anyone interested in that? Oh, two, I'm sorry, two seats on the planning commission that we would like to fill. Um, and I also would like to thank, uh, Sherwood, I'm happy to.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzma. Anyone else? Yes, who else?
No, I'm simply saying things you wish I'd, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving, and I'm not going to be as long-winded as beautiful as Mr. Matt. But thank you for your time with the city, and it really has been a pleasure to know you and then watch you work professionally with the staff. Excited to see what you do moving forward. Uh, just thank you for.
I believe it's been a problem for Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I promise not to be long-winded this time. Uh, but I do want to remind everybody that we have a tree riding on Thursday, December first, at six P. M. at Cultural Center. And the Christmas parade will be Saturday, the third, at two o'clock, going from Malden High School to the Cultural Center. Hope to see everybody there. Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Matt, just a quick footnote, the parade, the, uh, there is a float being entered on behalf of elected officials. So there's room for all of us, plus if you have any guests elected, you'd like to invite, uh, a couple mates from the night. But if you'd like to, we, uh, with the, uh, love to have them on the elected official float. Uh, the theme is the gingerbread house. So we look forward to decorating that, uh, float in the next week. So I'll have a free chair there. Uh, it'll be in a garage in the central, uh, at two fourteen Fairfield Drive. If you have any skills there, welcome you over there, along with our engineer of record. And see if we can get it out, get it out. You didn't have an access, my God. Anything else? No, thank you, guys. Anything else? Wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving and be safe and we'll see you. What a thoughtful pleasure our honor.
Same age.
One, two, three, four, second.